Councilmember Costellano?
Here.
Councilmember Mezner?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
All right. And now we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have the flag again this time? We didn't go.
We do. Hold on just one second.
Go ahead. So if you all would like to unmeet yourselves and say it with me, and I won't be saying it alone, but, or I'll just say it.
There we go. Is, let's see. Oh, my Zoom ability seems to have, there we go. All right. So it's saying my screen is shared, but then I feel like it's not.
It is not shared.
Yeah.
Oh, this, these have, oh, there. It looks like we've got something coming up.
All right. And then we are.
There we go. All right, everybody.
There we go.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Um, next, we are going to move on to the mayor's report, and tonight I don't have any official, no proclamations or anything to pass on. I do want to make a few comments about things. And one, I want to recognize that we're in week six of our shelter in place order, and it's a difficult time for everyone. We're at a point where we're kind of getting our routines, and the shock has worn off a little bit. We're no longer panicking and hopefully no longer hoarding, except for meat, apparently. However, and we're seeing the positive effects of all the work we're doing. But with that, the other side is that we miss people. Bills are coming due, so we're panicking for different reasons. And people who are going to work are sometimes afraid of what's going to happen if they go to work, and people aren't going to work, or nervous if they're ever going to work again. And yes, some of us really, really do. It is a situation where people are isolated for a long period of time and are starting to get incredibly frustrated. It happens to people in isolation, and it's normal. So if you're frustrated right now, I think that you have lots of company. And if you're reading, then you're noticing that there are efforts by all levels of government to start to return to normalcy, and we're going to be making some very small steps to get in that place. And I also want to remind people that when we're opening too fast, many places have tried and without sufficient precautions, and it's resulted not only in more victims of the virus, but also economic impact. So when things open up, I really want to encourage people to continue to do the very best social distancing protocol that you can. Please continue wearing masks. Please continue to keep six feet from each other. Please continue to wash your hands. It's going to be more important than ever as we're starting to get out more, that we pay attention to that. I really want to make a point to say that. And I also want to give out a shout out because it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and nobody is in school, which means that this year of all years, people are most appreciative of teachers. I don't think people have ever been so appreciative of teachers. So this is the week for it. And if you have one on Zoom, please be sure to thank them again for all the work they're doing. I also wanted to thank our uplift team for and Community Services Department for their mask effort, or their efforts to collect masks for experiencing homelessness in our community. And please donate them. There's a distribution site in Foresty Hall from 8:30 till noon, and then 1:00 to 4:00 every day. So you can drop them off there, and you can find more online. Finally, I want to remind you or tell you that although I don't have regular office hours, I'm still available to meet with people, especially Mondays from 3:00 to 5:00, which was normally my hours. So if you give me a call, send me an email, we can schedule a Zoom date, and I am so happy to talk to you about things that you care about. Just today, I talked to somebody about pedestrian safety. So my number is 441-4200, and my email is sseaman@ci.uca.ca.gov. And now we get to get to our presentation part of the agenda, which I am looking forward to today. And there are certainly concerns about how COVID is going to affect the economy. So we have some fine folks in our community who have been working on that day in and day out, and I have invited a couple of them here to share with us. And I have Leila Roberts from the North Coast SBDC and Scott Adair, who is the OES Office of Emergency Services Economic Development Person and Business Task Force Lead. So I'm going to go ahead and let Scott sort of talk about the overall things that are happening in our community with the task force, and then I'm going to have Leila talk a little bit about what she's hearing from our business community directly. So Scott, take it away.
Is my audio coming through okay?
Thanks.
Awesome. Wonderful. Well, Mayor and City Council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today. And hopefully, I will have some relevant information that will make it easier for you to perform your jobs and fulfill your role as advocates and guardians for businesses within your own community. So my name is Scott Adair. In my day job, I am the Director of Economic Development for the County of Humboldt. In my other day, day job, I've been activated as a disaster services worker, and I am leading the OES Economic Impact and Recovery Branch as the private sector coordinator in the Humboldt County EOC. I do get to speak with some of you on a regular basis already. Mayor Seaman also, in her role through AEDC, is on regular calls with our team and our task force partners. And even Chief Watson, I saw walk through the EOC the other day. So Chief, it's good to see you on the call. I really, when Mayor Seaman asked me to make a presentation to your council, I thought that I could share with you a little bit about what we're doing in the EOC and what our county level, at least, perspective might be for economic recovery. But I also don't want to just preach at you. I want to be available if you have any questions or comments, or if there's input that you feel like perhaps the county's not hearing, and you want to take it back to the, to the policy team. So really, I want to be here for you tonight. So I'll give you a brief just summary of what we're doing, and then we can jump into any questions that you might have. The Humboldt County Office of Emergency Services, through its EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, they determined early on into the activation of the EOC that this crisis was not just a public health crisis and a medical crisis, but an economic crisis as well. So Sheriff Hansel and also our OES manager, in coordination with our Humboldt County CAO, Amy Nielsen, they agreed to create an economic presence in the EOC, which is new. This is not something that the county has done before, and it's something that other counties are not doing. We're relatively ahead of the curve in that regard, and some municipalities do not have an economic component to their EOC. But our role and objective in the EOC is to help track the ongoing economic damage, the adverse impact that COVID-19 is having on our businesses and our business community. That involves tracking the number of business revenue that's been lost, job loss, business closures, et cetera. And I know that some of you have seen those reports. They're available on the county's website at humboldtgov.org under the Business Resources tab. If you click on that tab, it will take you right to the damage assessment. But we also track some of the positive efforts and some of the ongoing momentum in the community to leverage resources to help businesses. And so we're tracking the number of businesses, for example, who are receiving guidance and counseling services through SBDC, and Leila will talk about that in a little bit more detail later. We track the number of unemployed workers who are receiving help from, from the job market, our SMART Center, and other type of assistance from other partner agencies. And we also track the leveraged financial resources that our local banks and other public and quasi-public nonprofit sectors are bringing to the table to make available for, for business support services and other resource assistance services to businesses at this time. We're also evolved in a bit in, in helping to provide guidance and insight and input to the policy team, which, you know, that includes Dr. Frankovich, Sheriff Hansel, other members are on that team, and to help provide the JIC, which is the Joint Information Center, with relevant information regarding, you know, assistance and support services for businesses. There is available online a full actual action plan and breakout of what our branch does in the EOC. I've just mentioned a few of the duties and responsibilities. And if you're interested in seeing that, it's available online, or I can forward it to you. If it's something that perhaps you just have questions about, you can also contact me directly. I should mention, too, something that is fairly, fairly visible and very relevant, I would say, right now for the public, at least for business owners, is that our team is also managing the COVID Business Information Line. And that number, I know that that information line has been pushed out before. The number is 707-268-2527. But we work with that number to address concerns of businesses, to help triage what some of their needs may be, and then to direct them accordingly to local agencies, partner agencies, and also state and federal agencies who can perhaps help them with, with financial assistance or other resources. So, you know, with that, as far as, that's just a brief overview, real quick summary of what we're doing. There's certainly so much more to that. But I can jump to just a quick analysis of the economy, if you will, and then we can jump into any questions that you may have. I had the opportunity, very grateful for the opportunity, to speak with Lost Coast Outpost recently and share my thoughts and considerations regarding consumer confidence. It's important to note for, for all of us and for policymakers and decision makers that the, the overall confidence of consumers and business owners alike and employees, employers, can have a direct impact, whether adverse or not, depending on if that confidence is high or low, on the economy. And as, as governmental officials and bureaucrats and county and city staff, we should be thinking very, we should be very insightful and be thinking and pondering thoughtfully about what our role can be to help address low confidence where it exists. And that entails the delivery of timely and accurate information to businesses and employers and employees, and to customers and to residents concerning the economy, serving as a voice and an advocate for those businesses, to relate to policymakers and decision makers what their needs are. And that's part of our role and our task at the EOC, and we're communicating with Cal OES and the State Governor's Office of Economic Development on a regular basis. But listening to those businesses and those needs, understanding what those concerns are, understanding what the fears are to help allay those fears. It's, the, the programmatic work can be done. We have the staff and the talent here in the county to do it. We can develop the programs to redirect our economic recovery. We, we can seek guidance from the state and from the Fed, which we likely will, as well as funding reimbursement for our initial damage assessment and some of our capital and cash outlay to mitigate this crisis. But, but what doesn't come so easily is the understanding how sometimes negative narrative and the discussions that we're having in the public and in private amongst our own family and friends can, can really have a damaging and lasting impact on the economy, which is why we began tracking some of the good news. We call it affectionately at the EOC, the Good News Report. And everyone wants to talk about the bad news and talk about the number of businesses that have failed and that have dropped out, and the number of unemployment and the, the lost revenue. And it's important. We need to track that. We need to understand. We can't, we can't correct the crisis and, and correct or take action for our recovery if we don't understand the extent of the damage that has been done. But it's also equally important to talk about the innovation that's occurring, businesses who have, who have changed their operations, going from making, you know, widgets and gadgets to now making face shields and hand sanitizer. So, so my outlook, I guess you could say, is positive. It's going to suck, and it's going to be difficult. We're looking at what economists and theorists call a U-curve recovery, not a V-curve recovery. It's not going to be a very sharp recovery back to normalization of economic activity portrayed in commerce once, once businesses reopen, because there's going to be a lot of trepidation amongst employers and employees and consumers alike. And then there will be lasting impacts of the crisis that we will have to recover from. And so we will slowly, through that U-curve, improve taxation revenues again, and, which is important because that's how government functions and how we provide services to our constituents. So we'll get there. So that's my, that's my positive outlook and take for today. I know that depending on which economist or theorist you listen to, you know, opinions vary radically, and they're across the board. But I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the EOC, about our operation, about the county in general. And yeah, thanks again for the opportunity to report out. I appreciate it.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott first, before we move on to Leila? Natalie? I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Arroyo?
I really appreciated you speaking to the, the topic of consumer confidence. And I know you already spoke about it a little bit, but is there anything else you would add as far as good strategies to improve that? Or to address?
Yeah, sure. The CDC and OSHA have put out extensive, extensive guidelines for employers and businesses to take measures to protect their employees and to protect customers. As, you know, and I, Dr. Frankovich has said this before, and the sheriff has said this before, and it's also something that, it's a sentiment that they're echoing. It's coming from the governor's office. We're not looking so much at reopen the economy based on business type or business industry, but based on that business's individual ability to mitigate transmission and contagion of the virus and to take the required and necessary steps to protect their employees and the public. I think that when consumers and employees and businesses feel safer, they feel confident in the system that their employers are putting into place to protect them, to protect the customer, and they're following the, the virus mitigation guidelines and control measures to properly sanitize and disinfect and socially distance, I think that that will do a lot for the economy in the short term, because it will be easier. Look, we're all dealing with the fear of the virus, and many consumers are frankly scared. And so it will be easier to overcome that fear and slowly resume normal economic operations if we can do things now that protect the public while allowing businesses to reopen.
Thank you very much.
And if that was a strange, roundabout way of not getting to your answer, you call me, or hopefully that answered your question, so.
No, thank you. That does. Yeah, I was thinking that you were, I didn't quite realize that you meant, like mitigation measures that could make people feel more safe at their jobs or safe as a customer. I, I think I was thinking about, thinking it meant something else, but that, that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
I think Leila, too, will have some more information, too, about some of the innovations that have been happening with businesses, and will give us some more good stuff to talk about and within a, good stuff within a realm of a very difficult time. So, Leila, I mean, I'm sorry. Direct, Executive Director, Robert.
I think Leila's fine, but if you want to create a title, that's good, too. Hello, everyone. This is Leila Roberts. I am Director of the North Coast Small Business Development Center. We know one another for the most part, but for those who don't, the SBDC network exists across the country to help small businesses to start up and to grow, or, as the case may be, to navigate serious challenges, and maybe sometimes to engineer rational closed-down procedures. And our service region includes Delmarque County and adjacent tribal lands and Humboldt County. However, it should be no surprise to anyone that the majority of the clients that we serve are actually licensed and operating in or out of Eureka. So I'm going to, I'm going to throw a very few numbers at you to give you a sense of the scope of demand for help during this pandemic. And then I'll touch on a few of the themes and the highlights that I've observed as we've been working with, with clients who've been coming to us for help, and offer one or two thoughts about what we as a city and we as a community might be thinking about as we get ready to slowly, thoughtfully, rationally navigate our way to reopening and recovery. So I'll start with a little bit of data. And some of this stuff is, is sort of in the works, being collected and being cleaned up as I speak. So just keep in mind that what I'm giving you here has to do with, we consider the COVID epidemic upsurge actually to have started on March 16th, and these data end on April 30th, because we've got some good closeout numbers here. So as context, Eureka businesses account, according to the last census count, for roughly 18% of all businesses in the two-county service region. However, I will say that 35%, so nearly double, actually almost exactly double, because it's 35.7% of our new clients were coming from Eureka during the pandemic season. And this means for us, for this city, a 580% increase in new client signups for the SBDC alone. Now, let's be clear. We don't touch every business in Eureka. But the fact that so many clients were turning to us is evidence of, in my opinion, two things. First, it's really clear that the entrepreneurs and business owners in our city are determined to access any and all help that they can to navigate this, this really serious crisis. And it's also evidence of something that I'm extremely proud of, which is that this community brought together leaders from the County Economic Development, Scott Adair and others, all of the chambers with Donna Wright, the Eureka Chamber in a leadership position, and Diana Rios in Fortuna, SBDC, financial institutions, there were banks and credit unions on the phone, REDEC and AEDC, and other community leaders. We started meeting every day for a couple of weeks, actually, on March 16th. And that energy plus the resources that SBDC was determined to pull together and keep people informed with, starting on March 16th, so, you know, five days before shelter in place went into effect, I think really helped, based on the feedback that we're getting, make sure that business owners knew there was somebody out there paying attention, somebody staying organized at every level, from the informal organizing that this group did, all the way to city councils and board of soup, and that we were going to get through this by staying informed and by providing any and all services that we needed to. So there's, there's an incredible amount of community capital that already existed, that has been amplified, that I would encourage us to continue to tap as we design a recovery process. So this, this Humboldt County Economic Resilience Group is going to keep meeting, has been meeting every week. And starting this Friday, we're going to formally engage in what we consider our responsibility for helping to influence the recovery period. So I'll go back to a couple more numbers, and then we'll talk about some of the things that Scott was, was dwelling on, as well as a few other insights. The value of COVID-related investment from SBDC into the city of Eureka alone was about $20,000. That is, and that's not counting indirect. So that is an incredibly modest investment for hundreds upon hundreds of hours of counseling and training and information and referral and emails being answered. So I'm really pleased with the way our team has stepped up. There are a few things I want to make sure that this council and those on the, on the Zoom call understand about how to turn to us for help. We want you to reach out, and please let business owners know to reach out if you want help with accessing loans, if you want help figuring out how to use those loans once you get them. If you want to figure out how to do scenario planning so that you can be ready, resilient, and adaptable, we're, we're starting a webinar series called Thriving Together that specifically focused on adaptability. If you've got a quick question, call us. And we are also in, in charge, for now, of the Employee Layoff Help Program, which means that if there's an employer that knows they have to lay off employees, has already laid off employees, it is our responsibility to help that employee to, that employer to get information to those staff members so that they can navigate the unemployment experience, knowing all the resources available to that. So one of the things that I really want to return to before we talk about readiness and reopening is, is the part of this that is bad news. We are seeing businesses choosing to shut down permanently as opposed to temporarily during the pandemic season. And I want to leave a couple thoughts with you about that. So first of all, it was already demographically true that the generation of business owners entering into retirement age, we're, we're entering into that period without a plan. 85% of business owners entering into retirement age do not have a business succession plan to figure out how to close up business, how to sell their business, how to transfer their business to employees, how to liquidate, or something else. So we were already in a process of intervening with that, because it is everybody's interest to see what we can do to make sure that our viable local businesses, the ones that really are doing pretty well and could continue to do well under new ownership, stay open, if possible, with a new owner. That, I think, has become more imperative than ever. And so the message I want to leave you with is, perhaps this is a terrible thing for business owners who are finally just fed up. They've had it. They navigated the Great Recession. Maybe they wanted to sell then, but access to capital was dwindling, and the value of their businesses is dwindling, and they knew it wasn't the right time, and then they waited, and then this happened. But there is a real opportunity here, and I would love to see the city of Eureka take leadership in this, in cultivating and encouraging people to do generation transfer of businesses. It's so much easier, so much less expensive for a new owner to take over a closing, to take over an existing business than to have to start one up from scratch. for a new owner to take over a closing, to take over an existing business than to have to start one up from scratch. So if there's any strategy to explore for the long term that ensures that if there's a viable business that should stay in the city of Eureka and not disappear, what can we do to support and cultivate a transfer of ownership that benefits everybody? It could be transfer from one owner to another individual owner. Maybe it's a transfer from one owner to a group of employee owners who share the responsibility of running that business and reaping the benefits because it's, it's difficult now to do that solo or something else. And then the other thing that I'll say is I am observing some really extraordinary generosity and creativity in this pandemic season that I think is worth cultivating and supporting for the long term. I'm not permitted to name names of our clients because of our confidentiality promise, but it's, it's the stuff that Scott has mentioned. Business owners are taking the opportunity to go in together on bulk buys, sanitation supplies, et cetera. They are providing one another with infrastructure and other resources when one doesn't need it or there, or there's a need to share. There are folks who are collaborating in order to reach the same customer base. Restaurants and food service businesses in particular will pair up and offer special deals. And equally important, there are businesses that either had minimal or no online sales and service presence who have figured out how to do that lickety split. And if there is a way to support that continuing creativity, I think that we always needed to do a better job in the business community in Eureka and across this rural region of making sure that we had 180 degree, 360 degree touchpoints with customers online. Especially to be able to sell, sell, sell products and services outside of the region. Can we use this as an opportunity to help businesses to access expensive infrastructure and consulting so that they're going to be really sophisticated online presences? Thanks to the COVID pandemic put on into the future. So what I'm trying to lay out is that our clients are suffering badly. And it's, it's really painful to be accompanying folks in this, in this path. Because there are folks who really have no idea whether or not they're going to be able to feed their families next week or next month. However, I'm also observing that there are certain opportunities to keep businesses in this community, to keep them viable under newer ownership if needed. To try new business models and new ways of doing business that actually will benefit us for the long term. And so I would say that this is also a moment to talk about where there's hope for the future and where there's resilience because from what I've been reading at least, and I'm sure you have as well, there's a very good chance that we may need to institute another shelter in place situation. If not later this year, perhaps in the coming few years. So let's be ready. And then finally, I'll offer my two cents. If you'll bear with me Natalie, on the reopening question. The governor's going to do what the governor's going to do and we will figure out our, to the best of our ability, how to stage reopening in a way that's rational. But I have a concern. There are, the, this illness can be worsened or prevented based on behavior change. And if we can support the business community in taking leadership and showing behaviors in knowing behaviors that will protect themselves, their employees and their customers as we open in phases. Then I think that we are going to be in a much better position than if we simply said, here are some written guidelines and here's a checklist. Good luck. So the last thing I'll say is I would really love for there to be more robust, more interactive, multi-channel resources for businesses so that nobody needs to struggle alone to figure out how they can make sure that their employees and their clients and customers are safe with every touch point, whether they're a salon, a food retail business, an ordinary retail business, an office space, et cetera. And I believe that we are not there yet. I'm hearing from businesses that feel like they've really got the hang of it. And I'm hearing from businesses that say, I have no idea whether what I'm planning to do is going to be good enough. I would really love some third party expert help. So my proposal is that the, the JIC line continue. This, this, the helpline that Humboldt County Economic Development is offering is excellent. Wonderful that it's available so, so much and so knowledgeably. The self accreditation process that the county is working on is a very helpful next step, but it is a self accreditation process. And we are all casting about SBDC included for beyond just the CDC and the OSHA guidelines, which are kind of tough to navigate and make sense of for some folks. Webinars, subject matter experts, groups of business owners who really have a hang of this, getting together by industry and helping one another. Because, and then this is the last point, it does get back to consumer confidence as well. There's a real opportunity for the leaders in the business community who really work hard to get the hang of practicing safe business. And yes, I do mean practicing safe business in the, in the pandemic recovery. To then be able to demonstrate to their customers, look, this is what we want you to look for when you walk into our place of business. Here's a checklist of things that you should look for whenever you walk into another place of business. Be a knowledgeable customer so that you can make sure that we do, we are doing our best for you. And so that you can, you can feel a little bit more confident that to the extent that safety and hygiene measures are effective, everybody's doing the best they can. What I don't want to see is business owners floundering and being put on the spot for potentially worsening the pandemic. Because we haven't done everything we could to be supportive as they try to protect themselves, their employees and their customers. So I, the summary is pretty simple. There is a tremendous amount of investment going into the business community. They're suffering anyway. We don't know what's going to happen when all this debt comes due. But I think that we'll figure it out step by step as long as the, the folks who are accountable, us and business community together co-create whatever we choose to do together. So that's been so far. So I'm stepping off. Thank you very much. Happy to take questions.
Questions for Leila? Natalie, our councilman member Royal.
So you spoke to specific things that the city could do to promote businesses having a succession plan. Could you either say more about that or, or, you know, kind of speak to what, how we could learn more about that?
Sure. So starting in 2017, 2018, the Headwaters Fund of Humboldt County funded us to unroll the next step in something we called a business succession program. And the intention was to put on a series, a big conference followed by a structured series of workshops. And also to bring in experts in various aspects of transferring business ownership from one to the other over the course of a couple of years. And the, the intention was to use those resources to create existing workshops, knowledgeable consultants, a sense of what's actually helpful or not helpful for a business owner who is trying to figure out how they exit their business in a way that benefits them. But also is done in a thoughtful way because the lead time for a good business transition ideally is three to five, or sometimes as long as 10 years. The, the second thing we did is we offered a point of view about what we thought was a healthy versus a non-healthy succession. And my personal delight was in supporting not just sales from one generation to the next for, for folks who were going to keep the business owned independently and locally. But also to cultivate this idea that you can actually sell your business to your employees or to a group of employees who will co-own the business. Share in the benefits and share in the, the risks as well. So I think one of the things that the, the city could do if it wanted is we could, we could take a look at the, at the data surrounding Eureka located businesses. Get a sense of who is feeling the most pressure to get out for whatever reason. And then taking what we already know about how to support those business owners and what we know about how to support folks who want to buy or acquire a business. See what we can do to make sure that that transition doesn't end up with, oh my God, Joe liquidated his contracting firm. And they're just done. When did that happen? It feels like it happened in a week. But instead, it looks like Joe's going to get out. He's getting help to do it in a thoughtful way. He's going to get what he needs for retirement and the new owner is going to be Mary, who happens to be in the next town over. Does that help?
Yeah, Natalie, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Allison.
Hey, thanks for the information. Really helpful. My question was, I'm sure you're more aware than maybe I, I or others are about the federal government and seeing if there's any more support coming from Congress or the Senate in regards to supporting small local businesses.
I would be very surprised if there weren't a large third pandemic response, appropriations response at the federal level. But I don't have any concrete information about that. I will say that Congress learned its lesson to some extent in the second one because at least some of the CARES Act money and the follow-up appropriation was dedicated to rural communities, to local health centers, to small and underserved financial institutions as opposed to the very large cap banks. I don't think it was enough, but it was, it was certainly not nothing. I also will point out that if you don't already know this, if you know an ag business or a co-op or an employee stock ownership program business, the SBA loan program, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program reopened, but just for those businesses on Monday of this week. And the second thing to keep in mind is if you know anyone who still wants to apply for the paycheck protection program loans, that appropriations body has not yet been used up. So we can help plug folks into a lender who still has money for that. If that's something that they want in order to be, to be able to sustain payroll. But as far as having a crystal ball on what happens at the federal, at the federal level. You know what? Let's, let's all do a, a please, oh please, oh please dance together.
And I will say that councilmember Castellano, well, I'll let her say it then. Go ahead.
I'm not sure what you were going to say.
Talk about how you are, you are interested in advocating for rural communities.
Well, my question was going to be related to that. So I'm curious if, that is an interest of mine. And I'm just curious if you want to speak to what's already happening. I know that Humboldt County has actually been one of the more organized rural communities advocating at the state level, but I think it'd be great for people to learn more about that.
Yeah. So I think that we should all stand up and take a bow collectively. Because I hear over and over again that Humboldt and Del Norte counties, but Humboldt in particular was, was first to the mark on staying informed and keeping the community informed, first to the mark on making sure that robust services were being provided. We were the first to make sure that there was cross-sector organizing happening and the first to unroll the number of emergency bridge loans that ended up being on offer, both from county and city level and from our local lenders. I keep hearing from other rural counties in particular, oh, and the first, by the way, to offer virtual layoff health events for employees. So I think that's something to be really proud of. And I know that other counties are actually looking to us for continuing that, that convening role and guidance and leadership. And hey, as it happens, Leslie, we're meeting tomorrow, aren't we? About a rural regional response. But the truth is that we were also, we have the distinction, don't we? Of having been the first rural county in the country to report a COVID-19 infection. So yay us.
And I see Director Adair has turned his camera on. So did you have something to add to that?
That means I'm done eating dinner. No, I.
You got a little.
Yeah. Yeah, through, through, through the chair, if I may smear and to address councilmember Arroyo and Messner and also Castellano, some of the comments that they made earlier regarding recovery. This is why ongoing lobbying is important and outreach to our, our state partners. We continue to have regular calls with our contacts and representatives from CAL OES. If you're not involved in other organizational or partner agency conversations regarding economic development through CALLED, for example, California Local Economic Development is one group. You know, I would encourage you yourselves as council members, as elected officials, and then also to encourage your constituents and businesses in your, in your, your regions and in your community to to participate in those conversations. It's important, you know, as Leila indicated, we were the first rural community in the United States to report a COVID positive case. That means as a community, we had to activate quickly and earlier than some other communities had to in response to the virus. Which means that some of our costs and our expense for doing that has been ongoing longer than some other communities. Which, which, which drives up the ticket price, if you will, for for the, the overall economic impact that this pandemic has had on, on the county and all of our municipalities and jurisdictions. So continue to participate in those calls, reach out to your, to your state and regional representatives, reach out to the governor's office of economic development. Be part of that process, part of the recovery discussion that is ongoing.
Excellent. And we do have good advocates in Senator McGuire and Assemblyman Wood who sent a letter and collected letters from all of our local municipalities to advocate for more rural, rural funding to local jurisdictions. They'll be working with the county this week. So.
If I may, can, huh? I, I would add that I have been watching John Duris School of Jared Huffman's office advocate fiercely for this community and for our financial institutions and business owners on the Hill as well. So he's both a good line of information and a good cheerleader and bulldog for us. I would suggest that we continue to use him because he really is committed. It's, it's been clear.
All right. I think if nobody has any other questions, we'll let these guys go. And I will see you soon.
Oh, wait. I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you both for your presentations. Very informative. Thank you very much. And I also just wanted to, since we're talking about economic development, encourage folks to really shop local. There is a way to do that. There's a lot of businesses that are, have things available and I would really encourage you, if you can, to keep it local. That is one way that Humboldt County has been way ahead of the curve. We've been talking about shopping local for a very long time and now other people are starting to really see it. Councilmember Messner, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, I just wanted to, first of all, to say that what you guys are doing, it's very helpful and informative. And also just so critical. I really appreciate all the information that you've shared today. If there was a message. If there was a message that we, as a council, when we are confronted with various aspects of fear in particular, or negativity, like Scott, you addressed earlier and the importance of that positive message and the, which is part of that successful resiliency that hope is always there, but we're also looking at reality and how that works hand in hand. What would it be? How would you suggest that we address people's concerns when they say things like businesses are closing all over the place, or, you know, some of these statements that are just fear-based? Is there anything that either one of you could just give us to speak to those things with constituents that we interact, interface with?
I was gonna say, I go ahead, Scott, because I've got my PR hat on. I'm like, yeah, Heidi, I can help you with that.
Councilmember Messner, I uh, again, I think it goes back to, to timely and accurate information. Fear is often based on, that behavior is often based on not knowing and fearfully anticipating what a result or an outcome may be. So helping to arm those businesses and those employers and employees with critical information that they need so that they can make sound and informed decisions, I think will help to alleviate that fear, not in its entirety, but it will, it will help in that process and in that regard. Uh, you know, Leila mentioned earlier, you know, so much information is being pushed out to the community and, and you know, we're getting inundated with updates and alerts and websites with links for resources and, and news articles that we can read. Uh, and it's information overload. And so we've been talking about how can we take some of this information and put it into a different type of format where it really actually is meaningful to businesses and offering them uh, more of a, a, a hands-on guidance or a training approach to literally walking them through the process of how to be, how to be COVID compliant, how to properly protect your employees. You know, it's really easy for us just to forward hyperlinks and articles and, and tell everyone, the answer's in there someplace. Go find it. Everything you need is there. Uh, it's much more challenging and takes more time and patience and tolerance to sit with each business owner and walk them through it. And, and also, I'll tell you, sometimes what they really are looking for is just, is for someone to be there with them along the way as part of the process. So um, maybe, you know, and this is something we've talked about, just oh, I think it was Monday, Leila, that we were talking about this. Do, do you want to share a little bit more on that?
Uh, that Monday was weeks ago. I'm sorry. I don't remember what you but I, I will echo what Scott said, and Scott, good job. You, you can be an SBDC advisor anytime you want. So Heidi, uh, oh my God, businesses are closing left, right, and sideways. This is a disaster. Yeah, it's a disaster. And some of the businesses that are closing permanently were already struggling, and this was just the last straw. Some of the businesses that are closing, many of them are um, sole props, self-employed folks who realize, you know what, I, I've got to feed my family and myself. So I'm gonna do what I can on a move back insurance and maybe a job until I can become a self-employed person again. And some of the businesses that are being forced to close are really just, it's 100% COVID. And those are the folks that I think we need to target with short-term loans, um, parachuting in to help them make sure that they are maximizing whatever revenue they can bring in and minimizing their expenses, even if it means turning to their vendors and saying, I can't pay that right now. Can we hold off? So closing has different flavors. Um, I don't see any reason to dismiss that, but it's, it's not all one thing. Um, you know, what's the big deal? Why do we have to still in place? What is all this uh, PPE stuff? Well, here's the deal. This is not the flu. People are experiencing significant and lasting health after effects. This means medical issues that send families into bankruptcy. This means time on sick leave that people can't be earning money to take home to their families. So if we all take care, take it seriously together, then um, we can be taking mutual responsibility for keeping ourselves, our employees, and our customers safe. It's not a big deal. It's a pain in the neck, but it's not a big deal. Certainly not when you weigh it against illness and death. And then the the other stuff that we've been hearing that might be negative is open, don't open, what's going on with all of this? Well, let's be rational. Let's reopen in a way that first prioritizes the health of the community, because if we get another spike in it, or a big spike in infections, the way uh, the 19 pandemic showed some communities did when they were careless in the middle, then our economy is going to tank again. So let's be rational, rational and thoughtful and careful. And then finally, and you know, there's a reason, there's a Kleenex box in every one of our business advising rooms. I have found that it doesn't work to talk about solutions right away. Um, I have found that it is absolutely necessary for a business owner to just go ahead and say everything that they're scared about, everything they're frustrated with, everything that's on their mind churning around. And this is simply the way human minds work under stress. So that then we can start to talk about solutions, and the solutions often involve pick one thing, the most important thing, the simplest thing. Let's start with that and set everything else aside. So this is gonna be a long process. I'm counting on 18 to 24 months of, of uh, emergency response and recovery for our business owners and for some of them longer. Um, and that, that echoes the experience of the Great Recession, by the way, so it wouldn't be surprising.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for coming. I think that they, they got a little baby taste of uh, some of the stuff that we've been talking about and looking forward to seeing some of you at the regular CIRC meetings and um, continuing to have these conversations. I know City Council's very interested in making sure our businesses feel taken care of, so it comes up often. And with that, I will let you guys enjoy your evening.
Thank you for the questions and the opportunity. Really appreciate it.
All right, bye. And moving on, we are at the public comment period. Do we have any public comments today?
Mayor, we have not had any requests from the public to make comment this evening.
All right. Well, we do not have any public hearings either. We do have the consent calendar. And, and I have asked actually to pull item B2 so that we can let um, our HR director talk a little bit about this big project he's been working on for a while. So um, can I have a motion to approve at that with, by pulling, with pulling B2? Councilmember Messner.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and um, accept the consent calendar and accept for B2.
All right, looks like we have a second with Councilmember. And then, do you want to do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Messner.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
And Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And now, um, as I understand, this is an update that we haven't seen since the 70s, so a big task for you, Director Folger. Why don't you tell us a little bit about uh, what you, what you've been working on?
Sure. Um, so hi, everybody, Mayor and Council, coming to you here from room 207. Appropriately observing our social distance with my colleagues here. So yeah, this document was originally approved in, on April 6th of 1973 in order to conform with charter and current state and federal laws regarding employment practices, protections for workers, and things of that nature. It has been gone through several updates, but it's usually been by um, piecemeal resolutions, memos that are inserted into the original draft, communications by email, establishing past practices, and it's kind of just it's become a snowball effect with this document. However, we've been able to manage and a lot of our practices have served as well. We've remained compliant with the ever-changing federal and state legal environment regarding our um, personnel rules and practices. So with that, of course, there was a process that had to be followed in order to do it, a very lengthy and considerate process that took into account the needs of our departments, uh, operational and otherwise, taking stock of our practices that were working well, while also identifying areas that we could update, streamline, and become more compliant with uh, the laws that we abide by. Equal Employment Opportunity Laws, Protections for Workers, Medical Protections, and then also detailing and process how we address our personnel practices and how we um, can hire and uh, address performance measures and things of that nature, employee benefits. That also required working with a, a lot of lawyers, including Mr. Black here in our office, our own city attorney, who's very helpful, and the law offices of Lieber, Cassidy, and Whitmore, who have assisted many other agencies, public agencies, in doing um, updates of this nature. A lot of the details were done in-house, um, just so that we could have our own document, and it's not just a broad template. And so it really tries to capture everything that we have been doing, all of the updates that the document, it's in its original form, has sustained over the years and make it more accessible to our employees, more understandable. It is very lengthy, and there's a lot of citations of law, and it is kind of daunting, but it's all in there. It's all you know, easily understandable and much easier to reference, tell people where to go to see what the processes are if they have a um, a problem they need to address, or benefit they want to learn more about, or protection under the law they want to avail themselves of. It's, it's just, it's been a long time coming, and I'm glad to have finally done it. It was, again, something that we took great care in, and it was a very thoughtful process and incorporated a lot of input from my colleagues and experts in the field. So I'm happy to present this to you today. And I'm also happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Anybody have any questions? See, none. Um, I guess we don't have any public comment on it because people didn't call it in. But I'll ask anyways. Okay, does anybody have any comments? All right.
Thank you.
This is a, a very robust and looks very modern uh, set of personal rules and regulations, and I, I really do know that it's been a long time coming as far as the update process, and I really appreciate you getting to it. So with that, I'll make the motion to what is the, to adopt the new personnel rules and regulations. That's not the correct motion, but I think it'll do.
I'll second it.
All right, whoever said second, and I hope, and uh, okay, that was Councilmember Bergel. And you can do a roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, do I need to say that we're adopting the resolution accepting the new rules and regulations?
You, you've just said it, so.
Great, that is, that is what I'm proposing.
So we have that, we have a second and a vote, please.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Messner.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much um, for getting this done. So, instead.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is, uh, under City Managers Report, we have uh, EPD Calls for Service Report, so that would be Chief Watson.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, I hope, here. And we'll get, uh, we'll get going on this. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Great. Uh, so, you know, I wish I had a little bit better news for all of you and for the public in terms of the state of crime in Eureka during the COVID-19 emergency. Um, unfortunately, we've seen some uptick in certain areas of crime, not entirely unexpected, quite frankly. Uh, we'll go into that today, and then let's talk a little bit about what we're doing about it, which I'm sure you all want to know and what you hired me to do, right? Okay, so crime in Eureka during the shelter-in-place order. So what we looked at was the first 40 days uh, into the shelter-in-place order, which became effective on uh, Friday, March 20th. So uh, the good news is our self-initiated and proactive police patrols are up 25% compared to the pre-shelter-in-place uh, state. Uh, we conducted uh, over 1,600 patrol or security checks during that time, uh, logging a total of about 110 hours of officer time on these checks. And that's since the issuance of the, the SIP, um, all the way through April 28th, so the, in the first 40, 40 days. And I think it's important to note that while that's about 93 self-initiated officer actions on average per day, uh, unlike a number of, or really, quite frankly, many agencies across the country in the state that have largely curtailed all self-initiated activity, we took a different approach. Uh, we have asked our officers to choose their battles, so to speak, especially when it comes to what kind of enforcement you take with arrests and citations. Um, but we want them out there, highly visible, highly present uh, in our community, um, just to reassure the public that uh, the police are on the front lines and we are not sheltering in place. Uh, initially, we did not see much in the way of change in calls for service overall. Uh, that remained relatively steady, but as the shelter-in-place continues, we have seen a slight increase overall in uh, reports. And again, this is separate from the self-initiated activity. This is citizens calling in to report a crime or an issue. So we're handling about 112 calls for service a day on average, again, not including this 25% increase in self-initiated officer activity. That is just people calling in, requesting service from the Eureka Police Department. Uh, we have seen an increase, unfortunately, in robberies and commercial burglaries, which we'll, we'll discuss here. And uh, it, it is important to note that while we may ultimately, when we reassess this data, see a noticeable increase for the month of March and even in April, there really isn't enough uniform crime report data quite yet conclusively attribute all of these increases uh, to the shelter-in-place yet. Um, but it does appear that it has an, an impact. So um, we talked about an increase in armed robbery. So we saw five in the month of March, uh, while the monthly, monthly average has been about three. Statistically, a 66% increase is very substantial, and it, it, you know, it is a significant, to be fair. But when you look at the actual numbers, we're talking the difference between three armed robberies and five. So I don't also want to mislead like we've had 100 armed robberies. That's not the case. Uh, violent crime in March was overall, including those armed robberies, about 35% higher than the previous March, if you look a year ago. And uh, yeah, this is one of those not unexpected statistics. Disappointing nonetheless, but we have seen burglaries and particularly commercial burglaries up about 30% in March compared to the previous Marches, what our averages typically are. And uh, while that's really disappointing, if you remember from the report I gave on the state of EPD in 2019, last year, we were definitely trending in the right direction. We saw a very significant reduction in several areas, including residential burglaries, which were declined, are decreased by about 33%. Again, I'm referring primarily to commercial burglaries because we have so many businesses that are not currently open, so there's not caretakers in place. And I do think it's important to note, um, that 25% increase in self-initiated activity, much of that is business security checks. So I have specifically tasked our officers to be out there, highly visible, present, in conducting security checks of businesses uh, to help mitigate this kind of crime. One of the most concerning crime trends we're seeing right now, and this is a question we get asked a lot, um, and this is something even nationwide you will see discussed, and that is what's going on with domestic violence as more and more people are staying as more and more people are staying home, sheltered together, are we going to see an increase in domestic violence? And unfortunately, while we didn't see that in the first couple of weeks, we have definitely seen a significant increase over this 40-day period. So we took 21 domestic violence related reports during the shelter-in-place, and that is 50% higher rate than prior to the shelter-in-place order. Definitely very concerning. So we made eight arrests for domestic violence, which is a 30% higher rate than average. So if you look at the, the statistics chart here, you can see that post-COVID, we are up with commercial burglaries about 30%, with domestic violence arrests 30%, and 50% overall with domestic violence reports that were made to the Eureka Police Department. I, to my knowledge, I think we're the first local agency that's took a truly comprehensive look at our data. Other agencies have reported not seeing significant crime upticks, and it'll be interesting to see when they evaluate their data at the 40, 45-day mark, whether that changes. I know the sheriff spoke this morning that while their overall domestic violence reports aren't substantially higher, they responded to a significantly higher amount of what's known as 415 families, meaning disturbance calls between members of the families, including husbands and wives, boyfriend and girlfriends. And often those unfortunately lead to domestic violence cases, but again, their data doesn't reflect the same as Eureka so far, from what I understand. And then I do want to go back one more time. While all of this is going on, what are we doing? Our proactive patrols, and this is already a very proactive agency, it is part of our culture. You know, we arrest, again, more than twice the number of deserving individuals than any other agency in the county. And in fact, more than twice the next closest agencies combined, our KDA PD and the Sheriff's Office. I think we booked into the county jail nearly 3,500 suspects last year. So we are proactive agency, and again, while we are taking steps to minimize risk to our officers and to the public by choosing the kind of activity that we do, our officers are out there, visible and present, they're in our communities 24/7. We are not sheltering in place. We're out there for you. I wanted to show you a video here real quick that came through, I think, the EOC, and especially they did, that talks a little bit about our, our community safety enhancement team. So I'll play this real quick, and then we'll wrap it up.
Again, we all prevent any kind of transport to them, any kind of hand touching. They'll put food on a table for you, you'll pick it up, and you'll grab it. We'll limit any contact with them because they get sick, they no longer make food.
Sea Set or the Community Safety Enhancement Team, we are embedded every day with the homeless population. We're addressing quality life, we have water for the parks. Behind here, we're down at Free Jail, where they serve lunch seven days a week in front of our spices.
I'm a cook.
And St. Joseph's Hospital, we digest.
We serve free lunch every day. Anyone is welcome to come. Now we have to keep them outside. We have to put chairs six feet apart outside so they have a place to eat. You know, we're not trying to control them by telling them where they are. We're just trying to.
What we've done is incorporated preparations of suits to include with the bag lunches. Specifically include these two sandwiches, fruit, snack chips, cookies.
Not only work with these folks during the COVID crisis, we also work with them on getting to rehab centers, detox facilities, housing, employment, whatever, we tend to make life better, and also improve the overall health of the community.
We've supplied to him workstations with the help of the city of Eureka. We have a portable bathroom, and St. Joseph's Hospital has a resource center, which they can still access through the window.
I've been involved directly with St. Vincent de Paul, going on two years, and Sea Set is always there, and they're always asking us whatever else we might require of them. So it's been a tremendous partnership for us.
The team, Sea Set team, the Uplift people, they, we wouldn't make it without it.
So council, this is your Sea Set team in conjunction with the city of Eureka's Uplift Eureka Program. We all should be very proud of their efforts in conjunction with our community partners. They're out there on the front lines every day, taking risks, but serving in a way that's very compassionate overall with a very complex issue. And I know the question of the homeless and what is being done to help them during this crisis and to reduce their risk is one that's constantly being asked. And we're really, you know, what we're doing with the homeless is very, very substantial. One of the most recent things that's taking place, and what you saw there was example of the Sea Set team and social distancing that they set up through a special permit with the city to block off Third Street between A and Commercial, so that the homeless could safely eat their lunch, maintain social distancing, and not be disturbed. We're down there every day, seven days a week with our community partners, including Uplift and the DHHS's Home Program, which is their former street outreach services, Mobile Medical with, you know, some of our other community partners, and the list goes on and on. And so that, really, all these partners have come together, stepped up their efforts, are working well together, cohesively as a team. We've made a lot of progress. Most recently, the question is the masking order, and what are we doing with the homeless with masks? So that is something in conjunction with community partners and donors that Uplift Eureka and Sea Set has taken the lead on. In fact, I believe it's Donna with Uplift has coordinated a drive to get cloth facial coverings in sufficient quantity that we can continue to provide them to the homeless, and then exchange them so they have clean ones. And so we are proactively looking to address these kind of issues. I just wanted to touch briefly, briefly on that before I close my presentation.
I do want to say that for the council members, the video was not very clear audio-wise, but I'm sure we can get that sent to us on a link, and I'm hoping that on Access Humble, all the audio is perfect.
Okay, now, good to know. And I, I think that that's a video we just got sent. I think it'll get posted online here. You can check our, our website or our Facebook page and see if it's up already.
I've actually already seen it, so. And the audio was good in that. It was just the coming through the Zoom. It didn't work very well.
All right. Well, thank you very much. The last thing before we get to questions, if I can, oops, get us past this here real quick, is I just wanted to show you something that we're, we're doing here. Just came out through California Police Chiefs Association today. They're starting a campaign called the America Strong and United Campaign that Eureka Police Department is going to launch here locally, and I hope the other agencies catch on. Basically, we'll be wearing bands around our badges, and there'll also be lapel pins available for non-sworn personnel that reflect the red, white, and blue, with the blue representing police officers, our healthcare professionals, other safety and enforcement professionals, including park rangers. Red represents our firefighters, our lifeguards, our EMTs, and others in the first responder life safety fields. And then finally, white represent, you know, let's not forget about them, they're really important, our grocery and food service workers, our social service providers, and volunteers, and other essential workers. So the idea is to wear this band in this pin throughout the pandemic period until we can get through this all together. And they're intended to inspire strength and unity. So you'll see our officers wearing those shortly, and hopefully many members of the community. So I wanted you to know what you were seeing when you saw those bands. At this point, I'll entertain some questions, if any.
All right. I don't know if I could see everybody right now. I have to get Councilmember Castellano, and then for, Kim, did you have a hand up? Councilmember Castellano first.
And thank you for your report. I'm curious if there's, you know, some, something you want to mention about if someone is experiencing domestic violence, or if there's been an arrest, kind of what the follow-up might be or has been for those people so that, just so the public knows that they're not then re-entering a, a state where they're at risk or what the process is.
So, good point. I did not include in this presentation a list of the resources that are available, including through the Humble County Domestic Violence Resources and Victim Witnesses with the DA's office. There's actually quite a few resources that are available. We did put that out in a press release earlier this week. So this comes back to, great question, what is the Eureka Police Department doing about this increase in domestic violence? You know, that's a very difficult crime to prevent because so much of it happens at a very personal level, often in the homes. So it's not like we can go patrol a problem area and throw resources at it. But what we can do is, one, educate the public that domestic violence is absolutely not acceptable. Even though there is changes to the court system and what cases are being filed upon immediately versus months down the road, which kind of situations that we arrest for, let me be very clear on this. If you commit an act of domestic violence, you will be arrested, you will go to jail, and the Humble County Jail will accept that booking. That is one of the exceptions to the changes. So you'll find your keister inside the county jail facing the full repercussions of the law. And for victims of domestic violence, it's not going to get better. You need to get help, and there's a lot of help out there. We stand ready to help you. We are mandated reporters. We will come. We will investigate these crimes. We will arrest. We will offer you resources and help you connect to the resources that are available in the community. Captain Brian Stevens is meeting this week with a number of stakeholders from Domestic Violence Services, including Brenda, Brenda Bishop and many of others. They're going to come up with some strategies, again, for messaging and making sure that victims of domestic violence are aware of all the help that is out there for them. And as law enforcement agencies across this county, we stand united that domestic violence is not okay. It is a top priority for us to, to investigate, to report, and to make arrests as appropriate. And I know that that can be difficult. One of the challenges is often the offenders are a significant portion of the support for that family, whether it's the income from jobs or whatever. And so there's a fear sometimes to report domestic violence because of the impact it's going to have on families, children, income. But again, an abuser typically does not quit. And the only way to break that cycle is to seek help, and there is help for you. We want to be here for you. It's not okay. It is never okay. So thank you for asking that question. There should be some more information and a greater campaign in the coming days to talk about the resources that are out there and where you can get help.
So I have a follow-up question to that, too. I did read that domestic violence is one of the things that people could be arrested for, and that they would still be prosecuted. But what about restraining orders? I had a call from a woman whose restraining order was expiring, and she couldn't get a new court date, court date to extend her restraining order. Do you know anything about that? I know it's outside of your jurisdiction, but.
There was information that was pushed out on this very issue, and I don't remember the exact details. I know it's something that the court's aware of, and they're trying to work through, because that is a very serious issue. And those orders need to be able to be extended or properly processed, and I believe there's some mechanisms in place for that. I would have to look up the emails. I mean, we're so overwhelmed with information right now. You know, quite frankly, I'm not keeping track of all of it, but I remember reading some information that came out about that exact topic.
So I sent her back to the county courts, but we had a very nice conversation, and it's just really heartbreaking. And it's just heartbreaking. So, does anybody else have any questions for Chief Watson? All right, Councilmember Arroyo, or comments, because this is just a report. So, Councilmember Arroyo.
Kim, were you in the queue? I'm sorry. I, I was just wondering about, we've gotten a few questions about, you know, I don't know if you're anecdotally seeing an uptick in, in bicycling and walking in the city, but I know I've gotten some communication from members of the public who would like to see us do more to improve bike safety and pedestrian safety during this time, since there are so many more people getting their exercise in those ways. And I know I've seen a lot of kids riding their bikes, and I've just, again, anecdotally seen kind of an uptick. Are there any suggestions you have or ideas you have to improve safety for folks with that increase?
That's the, the topic of traffic safety is one I didn't include in my presentation. And it's a great question, because I've heard from the mayor and from others of you that citizens have reported some concern. We know that nationally, and even CHP has reported here locally, they have seen an uptick in high-speed motorists, seeing people even hitting 100 miles an hour on some of the freeways, believed to be in part due to the reduced traffic that's on the road. And so while the Eureka Police Department did initially suspend temporarily our discretionary grant-funded traffic safety overtime operations through the Office of Traffic Safety Grant that we have, which is about 60 grand a year, as well as the Humble County Association of Government Grant for the safety corridor. We did that initially because we wanted to limit the interactions between officers and citizens, you know, to, to help prevent the spread of COVID, because obviously you've still got to approach a driver's window, be in fairly close proximity. Typically, you're exchanging paperwork and licenses, and we were concerned about the safety there, and we needed to get a handle on where this COVID emergency was going to go and what it meant for the department, and how quickly it was going to spread. So we have reached a place where last week I announced to the department that we were opening up that overtime fully again. We did provide some guidelines for officers to help, you know, mitigate risk, protect themselves and the citizens from potential exposure, but you will be seeing officers out even this week, participating in that self-initiated proactive activity that is all about traffic safety and pedestrian safety. So with the safety corridor, obviously, it's going to be on 101, going north out of the city, up the city limits in the corridor, and a little beyond. The OTS grant is anywhere in the city, wherever the need is. A couple of you have pointed out a few locations like H and I, where there's been concern about speeders. So we specifically targeted those locations. We give that information out as places where we're asking them to focus their attention. If you notice some other concerns, like, let's say, pedestrian safety on the Broadway corridor, we can add that specifically to the mix as well. The other part of that's just going to be education. People, one, need to pay attention, slow down, you know, and then pedestrians and bicyclists need to be extra careful as well. Eureka's streets are tricky anyways, with all our one-ways and our traffic density. And so caution is always, you know, important, and they should wear bright colors if all possible when they're wearing masks or helmets or whatever, just they need to be real careful that they're not blocking their peripheral vision. They're not wearing headphones so that they can't hear what is taking place around them. Keep your head on a swivel and make sure they obey all the traffic rules as well.
Thank you, Chief. I'm glad to hear about the Office of Traffic Safety Patrols, you know, being able to resume, so thanks for that.
Well.
And Councilmember Bergell. I'm really glad, glad that you brought that up, Councilmember Arroyo. I was down yesterday at the, the trail, and I've noticed this two different times, people from the north 40th, the trail down to Coles, they just, they're just racing to see how fast they can go and then slam it on. So, you know, I know that you guys are down there a lot, there's rangers down there and stuff, but that's certainly an area also that might potentially need some, some looking at. But I just wanted to, to say that, you know, I really, I appreciate our department very much for the proactive policing, and this has been something that's been happening long before COVID, and I think it's really made a positive impact on our community. I love seeing the Sea Set team working so vigilantly with our homeless population. And some days, it's not that easy. Some days, you know, it's pretty heartbreaking, and it's pretty hard. And yet, every day, they show up to work and they do the work. And I would say the same for St. Vincent de Paul. They have just been killing it as far as getting things done and really showing up on a shoestring budget and those kinds of things. So I think that, that partnership made such a huge impact on our city. I just remember before, when, before the fences were up, and how it just, it was fighting and just craziness all the time. And so, you know, keeping that measure of order with the measure of compassion has been something that you guys have done very, very well. And I just, I would not want to miss an opportunity to say that just one more time, because it's really, it's important for our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, you know, we ask a lot of our officers, and particularly the ones that work with the homeless extensively every day, they're asked to do a very difficult job where they have to balance compassion and accountability. You know, we have to have accountability for behavior, or you're going to lose all order, and you're going to see a lot more victimization and a lot more problems. And you can't allow that to happen, but at the same time, we're dealing with a complex population with a lot of needs. I mean, the mental health issues right now are exponentially more challenging than they were prior to COVID. And we're noticing that on the street, and obviously substance abuse is a chronic issue as well. And so it's very challenging trying to do that. And so it's very challenging trying to do that. But I'm very proud of them. You know, we, again, we ask them to do such a difficult job. And it's high risk exposure to themselves and their families as well. And they do it every day. And they do it not alone. They do it in partnership with our uplift staff and our community partners like Betty Chin and St. Vincent de Paul, the Eureka Rescue Mission and others, DHHS and others. So it means a lot for them to hear that from our council. And you guys have been very good about messaging that a lot. And it doesn't go unnoticed. And, you know, I worry about them every day, quite frankly, very much.
Councilmember Messner.
So I just wanted to say that even just interactions that we've had throughout the city, you guys are doing a great job. The robberies, you know, have been up and I know that has been a concern for many people. We were robbed yesterday. And the officers were extremely thorough, very responsive. And they actually were able to at least at least recover some of the items that were stolen really quickly. So I know how hard you guys are working to take care of some of those those things with the restrictions that you have around you as well right now. And so I just really appreciate all that you guys do and really grateful for your diligence and just that extremely proactive approach to a very difficult time. So I'm really grateful for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Ramesner. And, you know, I'm glad we were able to help your situation. It's unfortunate that you suffered burglary when it's your home. That is about as personal as it can get. And, but I'm glad we're able to do some good. And, you know, we had an individual that was nightly burglarizing one of our local car washes. We caught him and arrested him. We also have a couple of our gas stations have been hit repeatedly. And we have identified those suspects and we're looking for them right now. And so they are out there working hard. Again, we are continuing to do what we do. Maybe we're doing it a little bit differently at times, but we haven't, we haven't stopped. And again, the support that we've received over the last few years has really enabled us to put together a fantastic team, highly trained team that is passionate about serving Eureka. And I know it sounds like I'm flying the flag here a little bit. Well, you know what? I am.
You are. You should.
I really am. It's not me, you know, it's them that they're doing the work every day from dispatch to officers to professional staff. They haven't let up. I'm so intensely proud of the job that they've done in partnership with other departments within the city as well, really working well together. And if the public could see what's happening behind closed doors and the work that the city team is doing, they would be intensely proud and they would have a lot of confidence going through this crisis. It's really been impressive because this is unprecedented times and this is challenging. I was able to chair the county EOC yesterday with some City of Eureka staff members as well. Impressive, highly organized, large scale deployment. It really is amazing for a county of our size, starting to draw some recognition, quite frankly, outside the county. And we should all take heart in that.
Yeah, thank you so much. And if anyone finds a blue bike similar to Councilmember Arroyo's shirt, that's mine. Just so you know. Yes. But I also was wondering about the ribbons. I know you guys are going to be wearing them for that support. But is that something that you're offering the public to wear also or put somewhere?
I would certainly be very okay with that as a show of support. We did order some extras in limited quantity. But I think we can, we'll do a press release when we get them here. I just wanted you to hear it first. And, you know, then the public can know they can wear the same type of ribbons as a show of support for all of the frontline workers, not just public safety. There's so many others. You know, again, you don't think about it, but the ability to go to the grocery store every day is pretty big right there. It's not just the medical staff and first responders and others. So we're all in this together. We're going to get through this together. But I think it's important that we acknowledge those that are out there that can't shelter and they choose not to so that they can serve.
Thank you. I had just a couple of comments, too. One of them is regarding businesses being empty. And I invited somebody from our SEP TED team, which is the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, to come and talk to business owners. And he talked about the checks that you guys do, which you didn't really mention, how methodical and how many businesses you really make a point to go and check on every day as part of, as a routine part of your practice. So I just wanted to recognize that you are doing that work. And it is unfortunate that we're seeing crime be increased. But I think that it's increased by less because of that stuff that you're doing. So I wanted to recognize that you're doing those business checks. And also tell you that I had a colleague who said, when she sees the work that the CSAT team is doing, there's an expletive in here somewhere, but she is so very proud to be a Eurican. So those are my two comments.
Thank you. And, yeah, those business security checks and some nights they've logged over 100. And you might have four cops on. So, yeah, I've been pretty impressed as well. And sometimes they leave cards behind so they know that we were there. Not always. In fact, we ran out of cards and had to order more before. But that's an important part of our strategy. And I think you're correct. If we weren't doing as many, we would have a far greater issue than we're having. Everyone hurts. Everyone bothers me personally, quite frankly. You know, because every economic loss right now, the cost to replace the window is huge for many of our businesses. You know, and we want to prevent that. And so again, we'll continue to be out there, continue to do what we do.
All right, Councilmember Arroyo.
The only reason I shook my head at you is because I'm wearing sweatpants and you called me out. Stand up. I thought I'd be professional from the neck up or from the here up. Anyway.
I have to admit, a couple of sessions ago, I had pajamas on.
Oh, yeah.
And I did not stand up and show the audience that, that I don't want to create more trauma during this crisis.
I know, but my last question was just, you know, how are you handling people that want to walk into the police station? I don't know if that's a common way that people come to address their concerns, but are you able to handle walk-ins right now?
Yes, so we've never stopped providing virtually all of our essential services. We did briefly suspend, I think it was live scans. But we moved to an appointment based system early on. And really have continued to do that, even as some other agencies have now opened up and started doing that. We never stop. We are starting to relax. Again, some of these changes with the front office will still maintaining the core things like social distancing and masking and, you know, physical barriers and shields and some other things. But our records manager, Amanda O'Neil, just sent me a proposal earlier this week to begin to even open up a little bit more. We're going to be doing live scans again by appointment. So again, all carefully done, but virtually all of our essential functions are up and running and continue to do that. We've removed some chairs from the lobby. So as we let people back into the lobby, they will be spaced appropriately. Everyone won't have to wait outside. That we are going to prevent, you know, 15 people from being impacted in a confined space. So that's taking place as well. And I'm very proud of the job that she has done and her staff in continuing to offer their services during this difficult time.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, Councilmember Pergal.
I just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Uplift also is doing a fabulous job down at St. Vincent de Paul. They're down there every single day. They're making sandwiches. They're talking to people. They're supporting people into whatever they need. And so I just, it's important to talk about that stuff. So thanks.
You're a team.
I mean, truly outstanding uplift staff is, you know, it continues to expand. Just amazing. Such an important part of the city's strategy with the homeless. And we can all be very proud of that program.
How often do we see cities where the like community services or those departments work together with the EPD or with their police department so closely?
You know, at this level, I don't think you see, I don't think there's very many other examples at this level. I mean, there's good programs in some other cities. But, you know, I think especially for a city our size and a county with some of our resource challenges, it's epic what we've been able to do together.
Teamwork.
Team Eureka.
Team Eureka.
And not just between departments, but our relationships with our community partners is so crucial. I mean, we're all in this together and what we're able to accomplish together. A lot of work to be done for sure. But there are good things that continue to happen even in the middle of this crisis.
I think that is a very nice note on which to let you be done.
I will, I will be silent. Thank you.
All right. So now we'll move on to council reports. And we'll start with Councilmember Messner.
Sorry, couldn't hit it. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I first just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Seaman for her taking the lead on and coordination on feeding the ER last week with our council. That was really fun and I appreciate you doing that. And Betsy Totten for her role as well in making that happen. So really appreciated. I think it's such an important thing to care for, even as our chief was talking about. Care for those who are on the front lines every day. And so thank you. That was really fun and special. And so thank you for that. I think really just I want to encourage people right now because I think this is getting to the point where people are struggling the most probably just emotionally. So encourage people to take a deep breath, to try to reach out where they need to, to others, especially those who are alone. And do whatever we can to reach out to our neighbors. And even if you need to interact with a person, some people can't interact at all with anyone, but I've seen and done it myself for people who would come just outside of our, I could be on the porch and they could be outside of our fence and just communicate and talk. And just the difference that it makes to even see, for some people, just even see another person because so many are struggling. So just do whatever you can. And if we can just keep encouraging people, because I think that this is a really hard time and people are really challenged right now. So everything that we can do, even as the report earlier that we started with, it's super important that we have that positive. You know, it's a reality that we're struggling with so we can face that reality and be positive and bring hope. So really appreciate the ways that we're doing that and just encouraging people to keep reaching out.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Arroyo.
Well, the Humboldt Transit Authority will be meeting via Zoom tomorrow morning from 10:00 to 11:30. I will participate to the extent that I am able to. However, I can't, I can't take an hour and a half out of Coast Guard duties at that time of the day. So I will be participating in a portion of the meeting. But I encourage individuals to go to the Humboldt Transit Authority website, hta.org for the agenda and further information about how to participate or tune into that meeting. Similar to what we're doing, it's going to be a Zoom meeting where a public comment can be taken by request. And let's see, I don't have much else to report at this time about my own personal activities. Most of my activities are related to being on Coast Guard orders. But I will say that Captain Greg Fuller departed or is in the process of departing from Sector Humboldt Bay and will be replaced by Captain Mark Heigl. And I was able to wish Captain Fuller all our best as he departs to go to Alaska. And we look forward to welcoming Captain Heigl. And it's been great to work with all the coasties and really appreciate everything that they're doing right now, continuing to keep all of the search and rescue operations and all the essential functions that they do, humming along despite the need to socially distance. So it's been cool to see everyone manage that. And lastly, I just wanted to share, I know a lot of people are are struggling with mental health right now. And I know a lot of people in my circle of loved ones are having a hard time. And people are having, you know, I think it's really hitting home that we're in a crisis. And it feels very palpable what the impact is. And I just wanted to share the National Suicide Awareness Hotline with people. Just as a reminder, if anyone's watching this and could use that resource to someone to talk to and staff 24/7, it's 1-800-273-TALK or 273-8255. So again, that's 1-800-273-TALK. And they also have an online chat function at suicidepreventionlifeline.org. And someone can chat online with you 24/7. And there's beautiful stories of hope and recovery from people who have been in a pretty dark place and have been written about their experience. So anyway, I wanted to take the opportunity to share that and encourage folks to really, where possible, reach out and talk to someone if you know that they're having a rough time. Contrary to, I think it's a popular misconception that talking about suicide with someone can make them suicidal. And that's really not the case. So I encourage folks to lovingly ask if you suspect that someone is in that spot in their life. So I just think it's more important than ever that we check in on the people around us, especially the people who are withdrawing more than usual. So I wanted to point that out and hope we can share that with our constituents as well.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see, well, I've been continuing to volunteer in the community. One of the things I've been doing is supporting Uplift's collection of masks. So I've collected about a little over 500 masks and bandanas from people in the community. And so mostly I want to say thank you to all of the people who are just so ready to realize that there are people who need help out there and are ready to come forward and help in whatever small way. That really does make a difference. And it's been so inspiring to just see that, you know, people here have a lot to give. So thank you all for being generous and kind and compassionate to your fellow humans out there. Let's see, and, oh, I started an artist survey about artists through a conversation with Mayor Seaman about economic recovery and planning. And so I started a survey for artists about their perspectives on COVID and recovery and community resilience and what they kind of feel is possible. So I've been collaborating with the Ink People on that to give it a little bit wider audience and just people who I know. So look for that in the upcoming week, week and a half or so. It's out there and please feel free to get in touch with me if you don't see it and you want to, if you identify as an artist, we all are in some way maybe, and want to take the survey. It's been, I've already gotten a few responses. And again, that's been, you know, interesting to see people who, a lot of artists in our community run small businesses, right? They're business people. And so to hear their And so to hear their perspectives, but also um to get a glimpse of their sense of like what's possible and their hope for their community. So um, thank you for that.
Is that it? Thank you very much. Councilmember Pergal.
Councilmember Pergal was on Taco Tuesday for a moment there. Sorry, I keep getting my daughter sitting here sore. Um, so I wanted to thank Natalie for bringing up the Suicide Prevention Line. Um, critical. Thank you so much for, for bringing that forward. Um, I'm going to, I posted the domestic violence line on my council page and I'll be posting the suicide prevention line as well. Um, because it's critical. It's, it really is. Nobody has to do this alone. And I think we need to really, I love the idea and have been doing that, reaching out to people. Because we need each other in a big way. Um, I had a meeting with the zoo and there's good things happening at the zoo. So um, there's been a lot of work happening there. There have been trees taken down. There's project or progress on the structure. Um, they're going to be starting on the foundations. This would have been last week. Um, and this is really neat. They're going to be doing um time lapse. So they have four cameras that are kind of filming the whole process of building this whole skywalk, which is, it's, I think it's going to be kind of exciting. Maybe that's just the nerd in me. Um, and then they'll be doing the fencing perimeter trail. It's going to begin around mid-May. So be looking for wonderful and exciting things happening at our zoo. Um, I love ours. There's always something good happening at our zoo. And they're also sending out e-chatter. Um, you can check their Facebook page. They're um keeping us connected with the animals and just a lot of fun facts. It's just been really fun. Um, just a couple of other things. Um, if you're looking for information that is clear and concise and relevant, I'm hoping to encourage you to go to the HumCo COVID site on Facebook um or go to the county site or, you know, local um uh, city or county kind of things. I think that it's really easy to get so caught up. Somebody brought it up earlier. There's so much information out there and it's really easy to get confused. So personally, I've been really um watching the Humboldt COVID site a lot. Um, just to get my updates and that kind of thing. And then I do have a call and I'll be reporting out on Thursday. Um, Saint Vincent de Paul, they are needing fresh produce and of course, always money um to support them in this kind of dire time. And then lastly, um, I would encourage people to get outside. It's been so beautiful. I mean, even when it's raining. Um, May second was the fourth anniversary of the Vacation of Palco Marsh. And if you haven't been on that trail, um, I would really encourage you to do so. It's a great um, great view. It's so fun to see all the different families with them, you know, their little kids on their bikes. That's one thing that's been really positive um that I've noticed from this whole COVID thing is you see more families with their little kids and their brand new bikes and they're just out there kind of being engaged. And I think, you know, that's a, that's definitely always beneficial. So um, with that, I'm finished.
All righty. Councilmember Allison.
Hey, uh, I just want to say, um, I ended up getting my three thousand dollar haircut. I gave myself a mullet for a Food for People fundraiser. And I just wanted to thank everyone who donated. I'm just so proud of our community and really sticking together during the hardest times. And I know so many people are affected by what's going on. And I thought Food for People would be like the perfect uh people. You know, there's so many organizations, but they could just help people stay full. And um, in, in regards to eating, um you know, I'm so glad to see so many people doing Victory Gardens right now. And um, I've been in talks with Recology and so has the city about getting uh pre-compost delivered to somewhere in Eureka so that people can garden at a low cost. And compost is a great way to do that. Um, I plan to really try and blow up my garden this year to just donate whatever I have extra to um, you know, Saint Vincent de Paul or Food for People, just to help people stay full. And um, I'm also glad Natalie and Kim talked about um suicide awareness and depression. And I just want to say, uh, you know, mental health is so important. And I think a really important component of that is, is exercise and getting out and walking or running if you're able to. And there's really some great scientific benefits on how um, exercise and cardio uh helps reduce symptoms of depression and also with sightseeing too. I absolutely love walking around Eureka during the afternoons or even two or three in the morning if I'm trying to stay awake that night. And um, and seeing just the amazing architecture Eureka has to offer. We really are such a unique city that literally every house on a city block can be different. And that's just so cool. And also while you're out and about, you're also making your neighborhood safer. So being out a presence is not just good for your neighborhood, but also for you. And with that, I just hope everyone has a great night.
All righty. And that was our, oh, Councilmember Messner, you have one more thing to say?
I just wanted to say Happy Mother's Day to everyone because that is happening this week. So Happy Mother's Day to all those mothers out there, working really hard right now, taking care of their kids and teaching them and being teachers and all the things they're doing. So.
Very nice call, catch on that. My daughter said something about Sunday and I was like, what's Sunday? She's like, I think it's Mother's Day. So.
It's easy to forget in these times.
Days are weird. Anyways, with that, um, yes, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there and uh, we will see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks. Bye, guys.